This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Welcome to our special Board of Selectmen meeting here on Thursday, June 27th. I'm Michael Frieda, First Selectman here in North Haven, joined as always by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us here on North Haven TV. I'd like to start by calling the meeting to order and asking everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three. I'd like to ask Sally and Bill to rotate the readings of these items, so Sally, if you don't mind?
Sure, this is really a correction for some action that we took in our last Board of Selectmen meeting on June 6th. This is for bond release number P-13-04 regarding 500 Middletown Avenue. And so first, I will make a motion that the Board rescind the June 6th, 2019 decision to approve the release of the entire bond balance in the amount of $40,000, which was made in error, as only a partial release of $20,000 was recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, so we have a motion to rescind the original...
Decision, yes.
Decision. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
You think we did the partial, we rescinded the release, do we need to do the...
Now we have to approve the...
Approve the partial release now.
Okay.
And then the second part of this release is, that we've already corrected by rescinding the first one, was to approve the partial release of $20,000 of the bond balance of $40,000 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Committee. So I'll make a motion to do that.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Next item.
Yes, item four. To consider and act upon a resolution approving an extension of the Town of North Haven's municipal solid waste disposal agreement with Covanta from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025.
All right. Before we have Bill read the resolutions, just to tee this up, this is a contractual obligation that we have, the five member cities and towns of Covanta. By the end of June, we have to declare whether or not we're renewing a contract. This is a five-year term that we're renewing. This gives us the peace of mind that we have a place to deposit our municipal waste for the next five years. It's a very important initiative that not only North Haven, Hamden, Wallingford, Meriden, and Cheshire also are going to be renewing this, so we have a place to deposit our municipal waste. Can I have the resolution read, resolved?
Resolved that Michael J. Frieda, First Selectman of the Town of North Haven, be and hereby is authorized to notify Covanta as required by the terms of the municipal solid waste and disposal agreement executed on December 17, 2008, that this time the Town of North Haven intends to exercise the town's option to extend the term pursuant to paragraph 1.3A of the agreement for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30th, 2025.
Before I second it, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Of course, yes.
We have to do this now, even though it starts next year. We're required to do it a year in advance.
Yes.
And you already answered my first question. The other four towns in the group are extending as well, or plan on extending to your knowledge, or have already?
They are in the process this week of all extending. We just learned at Hamden last night, or the night before, also sent their letter of renewal.
Okay, right. That was my first question, which you had addressed, but my second question is, any change in the rate?
Yes. We're going to be going from 67.32 to 68.60. By terms of the contract, there's a CPI index increase for starting in July of 1.75, I believe. But I should point out that this tipping rate, tipping fee, is one of the lowest in the state. The market now has gone into the mid-80s, so we've got a great tipping fee here. If we were to try to figure out a place to go, somewhere else, first of all, we wouldn't be able to figure that out, because our trucks, we pick up the waste, so we'd have to go to Hartford perhaps, or Bridgeport to deposit that waste. The tipping fees are in the mid-80s right now, and this is a great deal that we've worked out with Covanta, starting back in 2014.
So, oh, I thought it went back even further than that.
There was a renegotiation with Covanta to turn it from a burn facility to a transfer station back there.
And given what you said about the rates still being below this 80 average, this increase of 67.32 to 68.6, to your knowledge or familiarity, is that a customary percentage increase?
Yes.
Yeah?
By terms of the contract, yes.
It is all by contract.
Right.
So it's, well, you said it's based on the CPI.
Which is built in the contract.
Built into the contract.
Right.
Okay. Well, based on that information, I will second the resolution as read by Mr. Piper.
Yeah, I think you said it was a 1.78 percent rate?
So there's a range, Bill, that the CPI contractual range in the contract, 1.75 to 3.5, moving from 67.32 to 68.60, you know, it's a dollar and, it's a dollar and 28 cents.
28, yeah.
So it's in that range by contract.
Is this after 2025, is there the ability to further extend?
Yes.
So it doesn't terminate in...
No. There'll be another five-year renewal option in 2025.
Okay. And this...
So that gives us a, so that gives us a continued longer-term option than...
Yes.
Than having it completely terminated in five, really six years.
Exactly. Yes.
In the 68.60, is that fixed for the five years, or is the, does the original agreement call for yearly increases, or, because 67.32 must be the current?
That's the current, right.
And the 68.60 is fixed for the five years that we're voting on?
Right.
Or, okay.
There's a, the 68.60, we're voting on this for this coming fiscal year. There's what's called in the contract, a market rate analysis, where we negotiate with Covanta for the following year, which will start July 1st, 2020. But in the end, history has shown, any increases always fall within the CPI index range. That's part of the contract.
Okay. Well, for example, the past five-year term, how many years did it go up?
You know, I'd have to look back, but we've been at 67.32 for a couple of years now, yes.
For a while, okay. Well, all right. Well, again, I seconded it as read by the Second Selectman.
They've just re-upped me as Chairman again of this board, so I look forward to continuing, and I think it puts us, and it keeps us in a great position with what we're doing here. So we have a second?
67.32 is per ton?
Yeah, per ton, exactly.
Just to clarify for...
Yes.
Which is what I thought it was, but for somebody listening, they might not have...
Per ton.
Which is actually, again, if you think about it, pretty good, based on what it costs to get a dumpster or whatever.
That's right.
You know?
Yeah.
67.32.
And it's convenient for us, because we go from North Haven to Wallingford with our trucks. If we had to go to Hartford or Bridgeport, the gas, the depreciation on the trucks, the wear and tear, so it's right up, right over the Route 5-Wallingford border on South Cherry Street.
Okay.
All right. So we have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Number six is to consider and act upon a resolution approving the adoption of a First Amendment to the Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan.
Right. So the genesis of this, and I think Val was kind enough to send you the original contract in advance, or the original plan, which was adopted somewhere around 1991. The genesis of this discussion tonight, and this proposal, started a couple of years ago, when we met with the captains of the volunteers, to find out what we need to do to either retain the existing volunteers, or to attract new volunteers. And a couple of things came up. One was the building of a training facility, which we're working on, and will have largely underwritten by Quinnipiac University. And the second thing was to look at a more plausible plan that would do three things. One of those things would be to change the retirement age from 65 to 60. Another one of those things would be that if a volunteer retires before retirement age, the spouse will receive one-half of the monthly pension, which averages about $200 a year. So the spouse would have a spousal benefit. And then the third thing was changing and creating a vesting schedule. So you see, according to this here, there's a vesting schedule. If you turn to page two, you'll see that what we're trying to do here is, at least five years, but less than 10, at least offer a 25% vesting on the pension plan, which is roughly $200 a month in retirement. So we put together with Siegel, our Actuarial Analysis Group, a proposed vesting schedule that starts at 25%, 50%, 75%, and 100%, based upon year's service, so that a new volunteer, as an example, would not say, wait a minute, I have to wait for 20-plus years to receive, you know, a monthly $200 pension? So we tried to offer something. And these are the three things we've come up with, and that's what you see in the amended, or the amendment of the existing pension plan. Now, I'm willing to answer any questions on this.
I think, I think it still requires, you know, for people in the audience, I think it still requires that, you know, they, you know, to be 100% vested that they volunteer for 20 years, so, you know, so it's not like, I think it does recognize long-term, you know, volunteer service, and even, you know, and even give somebody something for volunteering for five years, you know, which, you know, at 25%. So, you know, I think it, I think it hopefully does exactly what the captains are hoping, that, you know, it attracts people and, you know, and recognizes their service, you know, even for, you know, for five years, but definitely out at 20 years, and provides a spousal benefit, you know, which is a nice thing for, what is a real modest, you know, for 20 years of volunteering is really a modest pension for, you know, for helping and serving the town for 20 years. But I think it's, I think it's, you know, changes that make sense.
Sally, questions on your part?
No, I think that the spousal benefit is if the volunteer firefighter passes away before retirement, not retired. I thought you had said if he retired before retirement age.
Well, if I did, I apologize. It's like if he passes before retirement.
Passes, right. So I think that is reasonable. Have you compared this amended, amended, the amended provisions to other area volunteer services, as to what they're doing, and...
We did not.
Whether this is competitive?
We did not, but Siegel, who does this for a lot of towns, I believe, had some input on this, or received some input, or had some information from other cities and towns, but we didn't specifically do any research on that. We thought a four-year, you know, a four-tier phasing would at least show that we're looking to retain and maybe attract.
Okay. I, yeah, I mean, the five years usually, I'm used to seeing, you know, in the private sector, more, you know, a 10-year vesting, but I understand that it's phasing in, so I think that's the counter to that.
Yes, yes.
So what would we be talking about as far as an average 100% payment?
On average, it's about $200 a month, is what the number is in the plan that was adopted in 1991. And we're not talking here about increasing that.
Right. You're just phasing in and providing...
300 a month, but...
About 300 a month for 100, okay.
Maximum, right.
Okay.
But there are some at 200, right Ed?
Yes.
Yes. 300 is the max.
Okay.
Many are at 200 currently.
Right. So that seemed reasonable to me. The phase-in is a decision, I guess, that you've agreed to for this plan for retaining and attracting and retaining, so the phase-in seems reasonable, and certainly one-half to a surviving spouse seems reasonable to me as well.
Yeah, now, just so everyone knows, we're here to talk just about this tonight, but there was a bill passed at the state level, increasing the exemption for volunteer firefighters from a tax abatement standpoint. That'll come to us sometime in the next couple of months, and that'll have to go to a town meeting. Tonight, our business is just this.
The pension plan, right.
Yes.
Yes, I think the other thing in the plan too, was that there was a few extra dollars, for instance, if you were a captain, instead of the $200 a month...
Yes, that's right.
I think you get an extra $5 a month, or something, you know, something nominal or relatively small, but at least a further recognition that, I think there are at least three or four categories, and I didn't bring the full plan with me that we provided, but, you know, so, you know, it does, it does recognize some people who, you know, maybe served in a higher capacity in terms of being a captain, or lieutenant, or whatever, to get a few dollars more. The other thing that, you know, that maybe again, from even my earlier comments wasn't clear is, is that, you know, it's not like, it's only if you die before retirement do you get a 50% survivor benefit. It's not, 100, just like in a private plan, you know, you get a survivor benefit afterwards, you know, or you get elected one for a reduced benefit. I think it's, if you retire, you get the benefit. If you're not able to retire and you qualify, your wife will get, or your spouse will get your 50% benefit, so.
Yeah. My next comment, I want to make this perfectly clear. My next comment is based on comments that I regularly heard from the fire chief during the budgetary process, when he was arguing for more firefighters to be hired. One of the points that he very often made, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, because you've heard all of his comments, was that volunteers weren't responding to calls. And so is, there is no mechanism of tying in the vesting to any minimum percentage of response?
Difficult.
I know, it's difficult.
Difficult.
Because there's so many, there's so many variables that come into play.
Yes.
But again, I'm making this point only because that's something that he had emphasized as a problem.
Yes.
You know, we have these volunteers in the 30s, 40 of them, I think, but he's saying, he, meaning the chief, has said that many times, none respond, and that is, and for, I'm sure, very good reasons and for a variety of reasons. So there's no requirement in here for a minimum number of responses, so...
No, you're right. There is none. It's very diff, would be very difficult.
It would, but those words that I heard from the chief so strongly during his various proposals requesting, you know, would you agree that he made that point quite often?
Oh, those points were made, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, when you're giving, which is what we're talking here, but, okay, I, but putting that aside, I think that the phase-in is fair, and I certainly think the spousal benefit, surviving spousal benefit is fair as well, and hopefully the vesting phase-in percentage will satisfy the necessary goal, which is to attract and retain more volunteers.
That's what we're trying to do.
I understand that, so, okay. Where are we?
I think they have a requirement, I mean, also to come to meetings on a regular basis and participate in training, so.
Well, they have to do the training, I would think, to maintain their status.
To maintain their status. So that kind of indirectly, I mean, even if, you know, you've not been so fortunate or unfortunate, you know, they have to go to a call.
Right.
You know, I mean, if you, I think as long as you stay in good status by going to the training sessions and your meetings.
And you're available, and you're trained, and ready, ready, willing, and able, if you can make it, but I, it just came into my mind...
So there's a way to qualify you, that you've been, that you've been active as opposed to...
Right.
Becoming inactive and then being dropped.
Right. Well, again, I'm making this point only because I heard the chief say that so often, but otherwise, I think it is a fair amendment to the pension plan. So where are we here? We, number six, so...
Seven, please.
Do we need, shall I read the resolution?
Yes, yes, please.
Yes, based on all of those comments and everything we've talked about, I'm in favor of this, so I will make the motion, resolve that the Board of Selectmen approves and authorizes the execution of First Amendment to the Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan, established on July 1st, 1991, for the exclusive benefit of the Town of North Haven's volunteer firefighters, in accordance with the provision of Section 7, 148(c)(5)A of the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut.
Okay. I'll second Sally's motion. All right. Do you have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Number eight.
To consider and vote upon whether to authorize the First Selectman, Michael J. Frieda, to execute an amendment to purchase and sale, to purchase and sale agreement, a quitclaim deed with covenants, assignment of railroad easement, and an easement agreement for slope and drainage easement areas related to the purchase and sale agreement between the Town of North Haven and 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC dated March 15, 2017, in connection with the acquisition of certain real property interest for the purpose of extending Valley Service Road to the existing service road to Washington Avenue.
So before, well, we have Jennifer Capola, our town attorney here, I'll tee it up by saying that this is something that we knew was coming, was part of the agreement between the property owner and Amazon. And this is a very critical step for us here, because we need this resolved in an effort to get this work into a bidding process. The DOT has been very specific that unless this road is conveyed, they, we cannot go out to bid to find out exactly what the cost would be. Now, through the hard work of our attorney, Jennifer Capola, there's, you'll see a reverter clause in here. And the reverter clause simply states that if by September 30th of this month, nothing happens with the Army Corps of Engineers, there's a reverter clause where the road then goes back to the Ravina properties. Also, in part of the reverter clause, there's a 20-month, 24-month term in here, where if the road doesn't get constructed by either 13 months after this has been approved, or 24 months after the Army Corps gives the permit, then the road will go back to Ravina. But our goal tonight is to have you listen to Jennifer, who's worked very hard on this, but also to state that we need this to happen to get into the bidding process. The state needs this conveyed to the town to get to the bidding process, to determine the cost, and move forward. Jennifer Capola.
Mike was going to mention it, September 30th.
Yes.
And the town engineer, Andy Bevalacqua, is here as well, and I do want Andy to come forward, because Andy is very familiar with the status of the project. He was involved on the DTC side of things, as the project manager, and then, of course, he became our town engineer. So, Andy, if you would come forward as well. So some of these documents, I know that Mike and Sally have actually seen before in terms of the assignment of the railroad easement, and also the easement agreement for the slope and drainage easement areas. Those were attached as exhibits to the purchase and sale agreement that was executed in March of 2017. Now, some of the language has changed, and it's a result of the change in the design of the project, because originally, the way that the project was designed, and Andy could give you more details, but it's my understanding that the project called for filling of wetlands, and then, as a result of the filling of wetlands, wetlands creation. And then there was, there was a change in the design. The Army Corps did not desire the wetlands creation, and there is going to be a fee in lieu that's going to be paid. There is also some removal of invasive species, which is some new language too, that you see in the documents. And of course, the amendment to the purchase and sale agreement is necessary, because the timeframe changed. You know, we, we had been hoping that we were actually going to be out to bid at the beginning of this year, and have, and have the extension constructed by the end of the summer, but that's not come to pass. We are still waiting to get the issuance of permits from, you know, the necessary authorities, and we do hope certainly that we will have that before September 30th. I think we're sort of thinking that it's going to come within the next month, and then, then the project can move along. But the forms that you're seeing, they actually did all go to the DE, well, DEEP, DOT?
DOT.
DOT, I'm sorry. They went to DOT for review as well. And in terms of the quitclaim deed, and this is just sort of a refresher, but Mike touched on this as well, it is a requirement that we do own the property, that's something that, that's required for the project to move forward. So that's pretty much it. I mean, I'm not going to rehash. We had a very long presentation back in 2017 about the purchase and sale agreement. And again, you know, the, the language is, you know, there's nothing really changing with regard to that, but for that timeframe, as you see in the amendment to the agreement. Andy, do you have anything that you'd like to add in terms of an update to the project?
No, again, Andy Bevalacqua. I mean, the primary reason for the date changes that you see in there is that the timeframes that were in the original purchase and sale agreement were just not tenable with the latest in the design. And as Jennifer had said, the Army Corps of Engineers, they kind of changed their mind well into their review process. They had given us direction, we proceeded in that manner, and then they later came back and changed their direction on the project. And plus, there's additional detail of the design, you know, back in 2017, we weren't quite as far along in the design. When we had the geotechnical analysis done, there was additional measures that really needed to be taken to properly support the road, and those measures take a little bit more time. So there's, that's really where the adjustments in time came into play.
So before Sally and Bill ask any questions, I'd like to thank Andy also, because he's also worked very hard. Now, this is kind of a four-way process. Andy and I have been working with the DOT. The Army Corps of Engineers is involved with the DOT, and the Ravina properties are involved with the whole process, including with the Army Corps of Engineers and the DOT. So in this case, no pun intended, all roads lead to us to do the approval before this thing can move forward. This thing meaning the building of the road that, ladies and gentlemen, will connect Valley Service Road into the Amazon site, which was designed to bring the flow of traffic with the trucks out to Valley Service Road to go 91 south. Our goal here is to minimize any traffic, truck traffic, coming into the site. We've worked with Amazon to come in off Exit 13, southbound on Route 5, into the site, and then we're hoping that if this goes through, we take the truck traffic out on the south side, going 91 south.
91 south.
To minimize any truck traffic between the Amazon site going southbound down Washington Avenue.
You couldn't come up with a baseball? Is it allowed to even go with all roads lead to them?
Well, the only one I can think of is the late, great Yogi Bear has said, if you see a fork in the road, take it. So our fork in the road tonight is, we have to authorize this, okay.
All right. Close enough. I, you might recall, I, you know, you lose track, maybe two or three meetings ago, I had inquired about this, because I knew that the Amazon opening was coming along, and I was really hoping this road was going to be done by now, in order to do exactly, you know, what you said and what I said a few months ago, to help minimize traffic on Road 5. So I'm certainly in favor of getting the Valley Service Road connection done. I have a couple of questions. The amendment itself, you know, the original agreement, which you were kind enough to send me, Attorney Capola, for my, you know, to help my memory from two years ago, the 26 months has already expired, but it said that the reverter could have been waived by the seller, so why didn't they just waive it rather than have to do the amendment? And if we're going through the trouble of amending, and I know, given, in light of, even though you're saying you're expecting it maybe within a month, the approval by the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, famous last words, what you hope for and what happens, you know, since we're going through the process of getting this extension, is September 30th long enough? I mean, that's just three months.
There is every indication. I think we're at the point where we are, I said a month, I mean, we really do think any day.
Okay.
Because we were told it would probably be a month, a month ago. So we actually, and Andy and I had discussed that, you know, was this really enough? But, you know, sometimes with these types of projects, and we've all observed some very, you know, lengthy projects in which federal and state government are involved, and, you know, it can take many years, but we do think that we are at the point where it is, again, fully designed, and once the permits issue, then, and we do want to wait until the permits issue to go to bed for obvious reasons.
Makes sense.
So, you know, it does seem that it is going to be.
But for such a short amount of time, it seemed, why couldn't they just waive their reverter rights?
And their council is not here, but obviously, they didn't desire to do that.
But they're agreeing to the extension, so it's in effect. Okay, well, that's fine. My other question is this change having to do with water. What did you, the main change that you said they made, the Army Corps of Engineers made a design change about the wetlands?
The wetlands.
Can you be a little more specific than that?
Yeah, I can discuss that.
And what sort of financial, what sort of financial impact could it have on our end?
Yeah, so in our original discussions, which was well over a year ago that we had up at the DOT with the Army Corps, the Army Corps had indicated to us that they wanted us to proceed with the creation of a new wetland area. So there's a bunch of invasive species that are out there. Those have to be remediated either way. So I think the thought was, is let's use that area where the invasive species are, and let's create some new wetlands. And that was the agreement we had with the Corps. We went through and revised the plans, and we proceeded down that road, submitted all the information to them. They took well over nine months to review it and respond, and when they ultimately came back, they changed their direction. They basically said that, no, they did not want a wetland creation, they wanted an in-lieu of fee, which basically means that you pay them a fee as opposed to doing any direct mitigation yourself.
And how much is that?
$170,000, I believe. Yeah, and that's factored into the budget of the project at this point. So that's the direction. They ultimately came back to us. That money goes into a fund that the Army Corps uses.
What? The Sierra Club, you had told me.
Correct, correct.
Well, that's nice.
And then that money is used for mitigation in other areas.
But it seems like we're buying ourselves out of remediation responsibility.
Exactly what it feels like, yeah. But this is the Corps' direction, and we really don't have a lot of latitude in that.
And they're not suggesting this, they're telling us.
Correct.
Okay. And again, a few months ago, when I asked the First Selectman about the delay, and he emphasized, you know, we're waiting on the, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers, and what they do is beyond our control. So I'm still concerned about the timing, but you seem to do...
And we'll have to address it if something happens.
Yeah. The difference now is that they have come back and formally committed. I mean, we've got correspondence from them to say that this is exactly what they need and what they have to have. So from their perspective, you know, the hard decisions in terms of how mitigation would be handled has already been made through their whole process. So really, what we're waiting for right now is just the paperwork. We're waiting for them to, you know, to technically issue the permit. But unfortunately, because we need three separate permits on the project, it's a cascading thing. So first, we need a permit from the DOT for flood management certification, then we need a 401 water quality certification from DEEP, and then, once those two have been acted on, then the Corps can process. They're a part of it. So that's how it has to come together.
As far as the design change, because I noticed there's reference to a relatively new map dated April of 2019.
Right.
I'd like to see the map at some point. But the only design change is the wetland issue. I mean, we're still basically going the 700 feet principally northeast, connecting...
Yeah, it's the same road alignment, it's basically the same design, there's no changes. The only difference is that that mitigation area that we had designed has now been removed from the design.
Right. Okay. And if you or Attorney Capola can just refresh my memory and refresh the memories of those watching, because this was over two years ago, the funding for this is, can you explain the funding for this, please?
And, well, I was going to, because you were going towards, well, what if we don't have the funds? Remember that we do have, we do have Section 13 of the purchase and sale agreement on page 14.
Yes.
That says, "If after receipt of all approvals for the roadway extension, the cost to construct the roadway extension exceeds $2.2 million, then purchaser shall immediately give notice to seller of such fact as soon as the cost is known to the purchaser, and then the seller shall then have the right to require purchaser to rebid all or portion, to perform appropriate value engineering, and to remove any element not directly related to the construction of the road that is not required by the federal funding. And after the purchaser has performed all of that, if the cost to construct the roadway extension still exceeds the 2.2, okay, then unless the seller agrees to be responsible for payment of the amount by which the contracts exceed the 2.2, then the purchaser shall have the right to terminate the agreement, the property shall immediately revert to the seller, and so on and so forth."
Right.
And we put that in there specifically.
Yes.
Knowing that time is going to pass.
The time is money.
And we didn't know, are we going to have to pay an in-lieu fee? So that's, language is in there to protect the town.
It was my favorite provision two years ago, and it remains to be said.
It's very important.
So, once, again, permit's in place, go out to bid, we'll know more concretely, you know, what the costs are, and we're going to look at that.
But we still want this road to be done.
We do.
So, I mean, hopefully, they're going to kick in the differences, what I'm getting at, if it's over the 2.2, right?
Well...
Or they're going to have to do value engineering or rebid or something.
Right. But we're protected on that, to Jennifer's point.
Wait, we're frozen at the 2.2. Is the 170 inclusive in that?
Yes.
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
So just looking at the quitclaim deed, it references Pratt &amp; Whitney.
It does because of the prior agreements between, regarding the remediation. And the remediation, and that's another sort of update to you, the remediation is almost complete at this point. I don't know how much has been shared with you regarding that.
Yeah, not much on that.
We know that they're at the point, because we were asked to look at an old easement for a potential sewer line that was going to be constructed, and this was just this past week, and the remediation of the property by Pratt &amp; Whitney is almost complete to the point where they're getting ready to file. And actually, I think the way it was explained to us, they would be filing probably within the next week or two, the application with DEEP for the environmental land use restrictions. So they're already at that point.
Yeah, the second Selectman is referring to the top of the second page, the quitclaim deed, and I had a couple of things circled there as well, because obviously, it states that, you know, the town is acknowledging that it'll coordinate for the continuation of remediation activities, and it also says that the town shall assume the obligations of the grantors, that is, financial obligations.
Well, of course...
I always think money, sorry.
Whatever needs to be done. I mean, if, you know, we have a circumstance where we need to do excavation, and we're dealing with contaminated material or something like that, then obviously, you know, it needs to be done appropriately. So we are, we talked about this when we talked about execution.
Right.
Of the purchase and sale agreement. You know, that's one of the things we take with being a purchaser of this portion of the property, because there are, you know, environmental units of contamination. And in fact, I think it really, the one that there is, is where the two roads are going to meet, right?
Right. Small area there.
So, you know, the idea that we had to step into the feet of Rabina in terms of, but Pratt &amp; Whitney is still responsible for...
Okay, that was what I wanted to clarify. I do remember extensive discussions at that prior meeting a couple of years ago about the environmental issues, and we had maps set up all over the place. And I had every intention, Counselor, of re-watching that meeting, but just did not have time to do it. So that's why I'm asking for a little bit of refresher on some of these things.
Sure.
But...
Yeah, that's, I think...
And you weren't around, so...
Yeah, if I was, I didn't remember.
You were happily on the Board of Finance at the time.
And that's a separate, I think, long sound these lines, and I think you're answering the same thing I was going to ask. That's a separate obligation on their part.
It is, yes.
Okay.
It's apart from the 2.2, right?
Well...
That was my next question.
Yeah.
But again, you have to keep in mind that Pratt &amp; Whitney is responsible for the remediation.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the majority, the majority of the new road construction is not within these contaminated areas.
When it says that we're assuming the obligations of the grantor, that is 415 Washington Avenue.
Right.
Not Pratt &amp; Whitney. I understand that. I just, you know, I see the town assuming obligations, I panic, you know.
And again, in terms of what we are doing, the construction itself, and the fact that they're paving over that environmental unit of contamination, that's sort of the, like, kind of an ideal remediation.
Right. That's, yeah, that's one of the advantages we have in this project, that there's not an awful lot of excavation that's going on. So we don't really have to deal with, you know, even though we're not in a hugely contaminated area, we don't really need to deal with the existing soils to a great extent, because the majority of this job is a fill job. So we're bringing fill material in in order to raise the roadbed and get it to the elevation we need it.
I didn't really have too much to say about the assignment of the railroad easement.
That's essentially the bridge.
Yes. But I, could we go to the slope and drainage document? Because did I hear you say that one of the other changes was that adding the, because there's the temporary easement, I think it's got a five-year limit, if I remember reading this correctly, for removal of the invasive plants?
Right.
So is that, that's...
So that was, yeah, that was not in the original agreement because we didn't realize at the time when the original agreement was put together that those invasives were there. So we didn't realize that was something we would have to mitigate for.
Right.
So that's why that area was added in. So that gives us the opportunity to go in and do that mitigation in that area, remove those invasive species, and put native plants back in their place. That's the intent. But we needed rights to be able to work in those areas, so that's where that comes in.
Right. And so that will be an added expense for the town, though, right?
To do the mitigate, to do the, yeah, to do the invasive mitigation. Yeah, that's part of the project, yeah.
I have a hard time removing stuff from my yard, you know. Who knows what's out there?
Yeah.
But...
Mile minute vine.
Yes.
Which is just like it sounds. It grows just crazy.
Yes, yeah. I found something interesting here that they're afraid we're not going to sign or file stuff, and they want to act as our attorney in fact and file stuff. What are they worried about with that? Is that unusual, or is that customary in documents like this? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Well...
Or is that of no significance to you?
That's for the land use restriction. Basically, what they're saying is that...
Where did I see that?
If the town doesn't decide, I think it's in a couple of spots.
It is in a couple of spots.
If the town decides that we don't want to sign the land use restriction as it relates to the easements that we're getting, that they would have the authority to do that. And I think they're doing that because they pretty much have to, because DEEP is going to require them to have full control over that environmental land use restriction.
Here it is. It's on Exhibit A on the railroad easement, actually. Well, why would we not sign it? Why are they concerned that we wouldn't sign and file? Do you know? So that...
Yeah, I don't know why they're concerned about it, but, right. But I understand why they would put it in there, because they won't be able to get their environmental land use restriction processed unless we sign off. So they want to put a term in there to force the town to make sure that does get signed. Not that we've ever given any indication that we wouldn't.
Have they dealt with the town, the residents? I mean, usually, weird provisions are put in because something happened in the past, right?
Well, the other thing is, too, is ultimately, we don't know. I mean, that could be, because when you work with DEEP, I mean, in my experience, they have a format that they like to see, because, again, you know, documents will get submitted to DEEP as part of the ELUR application, and it may be that somewhere along the line, that that language may have been required to be in the document by DEEP, as he's indicated. That's a very real possibility.
But that environmental land use restriction is very important to their project and them being able to, you know, to close out that environmental part. So if the town decides, hey, we're not going to sign, that's going to put them in a very, very difficult position, so...
Well, I don't, I mean, this isn't really, I found it more amusing and entertaining than substantive in nature. I just wondered if it bothered you at all. So if it doesn't bother you, it doesn't bother me. But I thought it was a little unusual.
I've not, I've not seen it before, but...
Right, that's, neither have I, but you've seen a lot more municipal agreements than I have, but I've never seen anything like that. And it just begs the question, well, why wouldn't, you know, it seems odd, but okay. I'm ready.
Okay, so ready to read?
So, and then just a very simple question, I think, under the, again, under the quitclaim, we have 13 months to come, after the, we've got an agreement to construct the road.
Right.
Or, you know, so actually, on the outside, the 24 months, we have 11 months to get the construction agreement.
Right.
In place after we get approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. So just timeframe-wise, you know, if I look at 24 months being the outside and maybe 13 being much more quicker, when, the next step after we get approval from the Army Corps of Engineers is to go out and get a contract with a construction firm to build the road.
Correct, correct.
And how long would, how long might that take?
To get under contract?
Yeah.
I would say probably two to three months, but the 13 months is from the time we sign a contract with the contractor.
So it's pretty much saying you better sign a contract within 11 months, and then you have 13 months to meet the 14-month period from the signing of this, right?
No, it's the signing of the contract with the contractor.
No, the 13 months is, I understand, the 13 months runs from the date of the construction contract.
Right.
And the 24 months is from the date that the OCIE issues the permit.
Right.
So that's the outside timeframe.
Yes.
And the 13 months is within there, depending upon when we sign the date of the construction contract.
Right.
Right? Okay.
And Sally was saying that, you know, doing the same math that I was doing. We had 11 months to get the contract done, but it shouldn't take us 11, it should only take us two or three.
Oh, yeah.
Then the 13 months becomes operative. And then the road, and then it is possible, simply, that the road should be done within 13 months.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We've discussed that in detail with the Design Engineers, DTC, and they're comfortable with that 13-month period.
So very well, maybe within like a little over a year, the road could be completed, potentially?
I think they've worked up an 11-month construction period, so we tacked a couple months on there. And if you read the language, it's based on substantial completion, from my perspective. And they made it very specific that it's the town engineers' call in terms of completion, so, you know. So that gives us a little more control as well.
It's not done yet.
By the end of next summer, it will be probably done.
One shovel, one...
That's the hope, yeah.
It's done. Okay, that's good. So you're the referee. Well, I like that. Okay.
Number nine.
Well, of course, weather permitting is always an issue when you're doing something like this, right? I mean, look at all the rain.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, but not even you can control the weather, can you, Michael?
No, no control.
Okay, right. So where are we here?
Number nine, please.
Number nine.
Number nine? Okay, I'll be happy to make a motion resolved to consider and vote upon whether to authorize the First Selectman Michael J. Frida to execute an amendment to purchase and sale agreement, a quitclaim deed with covenants, an assignment of railroad easement, and an easement agreement for slope and drainage easement areas related to the purchase and sale agreement between the Town of North Haven and 415 Washington Avenue Partners LLC dated March 15, 2017 in connection with the acquisition of certain real property interest for the purpose of extending Valley Service Road to the existing service road to Washington Avenue. So I'll make that motion, Bill.
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Perhaps, Mr. Bevelacqua, I could call you and come by and see this new April 2019 map at some time?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
At your convenience?
Yeah, absolutely.
I like looking at maps.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I do, too.
I'm sure you do. Thank you.
So, there is no further business to discuss at this special meeting. We'll see everybody July 11th. Motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Happy Fourth of July.
Great.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.